Good evening. I'd like to call the City of Manaus a common council meeting to order. Please rise and join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could we have the roll call, please?
Alderman Sevenik.
Here.
Alderman Collier.
Here.
Alderman Kruger.
Here.
Alderman Zalinski.
Here.
Alderman Grady.
Here.
Alderman Benner.
Here.
Alderman Nichols.
Here.
Alderman Taylor.
I think he is on his way. Item, the first item on the agenda this evening is a public hearing. It's a special use permit for 222 Washington Street. Director Buck?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, this is a special, special use permit amendment request, basically to allow the change in a roof pitch on the property at 222 Washington Street. It's former office building that in the summer of 2016 received a special use permit for some site alterations associated with its conversion to heated indoor warehousing.
Thank you. Is there anyone here from the public who wishes to speak on the special use permit for 222 Washington Street? Seeing no one, we'll call the public hearing to a close and we'll open it up for public comments on any matter of concern to the city. And no one here to speak this evening as well?
I think there's one guy out there.
(laughing).
He said he's here for moral support. Item F is report of department head staff and consultants. Do we have a motion for the minutes and communications this evening? Alderman Sevenik.
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'd like for us to approve minutes A through G and communications H through J.
Is there a second? So motion, a second. Is there any discussion? Alderman Benner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Couple of things. One, I want, just want to draw attention to the library board meeting minutes and item three under staff reports. I just wanted to mention that they have added T-Mobile hotspots and new laptops with built-in Wi-Fi to the collection for checkout, and that was courtesy of Faith Technologies. And also Alliance Industries made a contribution to the library for the children's technology. I just don't, I think sometimes when we get these donations, we don't always let folks know who in our community is helping us out. Another thing I just want to draw attention to a little bit is item J. We had diversity and inclusion training through CivMec. And it looks like we had a couple of people that haven't taken for us yet. What's the status of all the employees? Have they taken it?
John, you?
Of all the employees and all the staff and all of the elected officials, I think there are three elected officials that haven't taken the training yet. I'm not sure if there may be any from the police department chief that have not taken it. There were a couple of people from the library that did not attend the training here, but they were able to have the videotape version of at the library. And what Candy had set up there was that we needed to have a proctor set up there. And so some of the employees from the library did take it there under proctor conditions. So to my knowledge, I'm not sure that we have many left of the employees, but we do have a couple elected officials that still would need to take the training yet. And after talking with Candy this afternoon, we prefer it to be in a proctored environment. So that her wish and my agreement is that we can maybe offer it, if not here, maybe we could offer it at the library since they are open seven days a week. So if it's not convenient during a Monday through Friday here, we can maybe offer it there since the library has done this already for some of their employees under a proctored environment to have that video available for the training. But I think that would be her update from her report.
Are they required to take it to a proctored environment or can they do it on their own?
From what my understanding was is that we prefer to have it on record with a written statement that they were in attendance where it was under a proctored environment and not just available online. That would, I would concur with her after talking with her this afternoon, after I had gone to lunch, that that would be their, the wish that from our department.
Okay.
But we would offer the library as another option.
Okay. I don't know if other aldermen want to give their input on this, but when I took it, I had mixed feelings on it. And probably what maybe didn't surprise me the most, but one of the things that came out was when they asked employees that they were proud to work for the City of Manaus, how many of them said that they were not. And some of them said that they were embarrassed about the way that we conduct ourselves here and via publicizing the feedback that they get about how we conduct ourselves at the city council. And we set the tone for what the cities, what the image of the city is and for what our management and for what our employees would, could, or should expect from management. And I just, it maybe didn't surprise me, but yet to still hear it articulated is, was a little unsettling. And I didn't know if other aldermen had the same experience or what their thoughts were. The other parts of it, I get a lot of it with my job and stuff, so that really didn't get in. I was more interested in what the employees thought. And that was some of the feedback that I got. And it's a little bit uncomfortable. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to clarify, seeing, when, when this whole thing was originally done, it was intended to where there was supposed to be an available online version or something like that because a couple of us have a hard time making a plan. As I told you today, John, I've seen everybody's face in here more than I've seen my own son's face in last month because of all my traveling. But I was just talking with the mayor and we're going to try to work out something where it could be feasible for me to be able to spend the three hours to do it and all that. So hopefully I'll be able to get it done next month. I just wanted to remind everybody that initially there was supposed to be available online or another format so it could be taken, not right on premises. That was, that was my only comment. Thank you.
Alderman Zalinski.
Thank you. I'd just like to reiterate what Alderman Kruger said, seeing as I'm one of the people that didn't take it yet. I work a couple of jobs and I just haven't had the time. And this is, was discussed when we brought this forward for, I guess, us specifically as council members, that we would have the option to take this online and do it on our own time instead of trying to work it into our busy schedules. So that's, I don't know, things got changed or stuff like that, but we were supposed to be able to watch it online or maybe make it to one of these meetings where we could sign a document that says we agree with what's being said or we participated, but I guess something got misinterpreted. Thank you.
I don't remember what the exact motion was, if it was just that it was going to be taped for future viewing from people who couldn't make it or if we said that you could take it home with you. But I think that we can work with John and Candy to figure out a way that we can ensure that it was actually watched and we'll, we'll figure that out somehow. Alderman Taylor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was on vacation when this came forward to the council and I didn't have the opportunity to vote on it. And I think the motion that evening was out of order because we were changing council policy by mandating something. So I still don't think that that was the proper way to do business. Thank you.
Alderman Collier?
I'm not here to pick a fight, but it'll end up being one. It's a 90-minute class. I don't find any reason nobody shouldn't take it. And if you can't find 90 minutes of your time to watch this, maybe you should sit on your hands and do nothing and stay home. Thank you.
John, is our Candy two hours or two and a half hours? Oh, is it only 90 minutes? Okay. I thought it was longer than that. Okay. I just wanted to verify. It seemed like it was a little longer than that, but Alderman Sevenik?
Thank you, Mayor. Kind of like Kevin too. I mean, we've probably attended these in the past and it gets repetitive for some of us, but I did attend. I just want to say that what I liked about it was that I got the opportunity to meet employees outside City Hall that I don't get to see on a regular basis. So there were people from the library and there were people from the police department and there were people from the fire department and the utilities, which I was surprised, you know? So I enjoyed the class with that. I don't know if I really got anything out of it. I want to be honest about that with this body. I guess it's, it's one of those things that our insurance company wants us to do and I think we need to follow through on that. So, but otherwise, as far as, as I stated before, what I really got out of it was to be able to hear more from other employees of the city and how they felt about how things are running. And, and I know there were some questions, but I think all in all, the, the staff of this community, they do a great job and they're very proud of the City of Manaus.
And that's why we tend to mix the utilities and the city staff together too, so that we can get to know each other and have those opportunities just like you had during that class. Alderman Taylor? Whoops. Sorry.
Thank you. You know, Mr. Mayor, we, we go through this training and you hear the comments from the aldermen on the 4th district about picking a fight and making rude comments and you just let it roll off our backs. So what does that training even do when you hear comments like from the 4th district? Any response to that?
I'm not going to respond to that at this time.
You should be responding to something like that because that's harassment, Mayor. And that's what this class was for. I've taken it for 40 years with the company I work for. And that's harassment. And I've asked you personally to stop it. Alderman Benner asked that people are about the way we operate up here. I asked the district four alderman three times to stop harassing me. I asked him in front of you, Mayor, to stop harassing me and it continues. And you continue to let this form of government breed itself out here in the public. And I'm just calling you out on it. And, you know, it's not all kumbaya here that we all attend a meeting and let this behavior go on, Mayor.
I will stop it every time that it happens with anyone then at this point.
You just let alter it.
From this point on, I will.
Pick a fight.
Are we finished? Okay. Seeing no other comments? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Consent agenda has, I don't know how many items? Six. Minutes to approve from the common council meeting of October 16th and the joint common council meeting with the City of Nina on October 17th. The administration committee recommendations from October 16th, the joint powers agreement, Winnebago County Emergency 911 system for 2017-18. And the plan commission recommendations from October 17th. Recommending the request to amend the special use permit for 222 Washington Street to allow the applicant the option to retain the existing flat roof or install a 412 pitch roof on the existing building with the condition that asphalt shingles be used better coincide with neighboring properties. The recommendation for the certified survey map for lot combination Kelly Lake Drive, Martinson Isley, Inc., has presented combining 2445 Kelly Lake Drive with parcel 70070097 with parcels 70171199. And the shared use and access easements for 328 Sixth Street and 600 Walburn Street, Manaus Joint School District. Does anyone wish to have any of the items separated? Alderman Sevenik?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to hold item three, the shared use access easement at 328 Sixth Street and 600 Walburn.
Whoops. Get there eventually. Is there anyone else? Seeing no one else, is there a motion for the consent agenda items? One, two, three, and one, two. Alderman Sevenik?
That's interesting.
Yeah. We have a little numbering problem there.
I will move for the consent agenda items, other than the one that I'd stated for the shared use easement of 328 Sixth and 600 Walburn Street.
That works. Is there a second? So motion, a second? Could, whoops.
I'm sorry, who's second?
Alderman Kruger. Pointing like this doesn't do a lot of good, does it?
(laughing). So it's actually run through five.
Yes.
Yeah, so we got it straight, so.
Okay. We're ready for a roll call vote, isn't it? Okay.
Motion carried on roll call eight zero.
So item three on the plan commission recommendations is the shared use and access easement. Does anyone wish to make a motion? Oh, you, can you?
I'm sorry.
Alderman Benner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I make a motion to approve consent agenda item number six, shared use and access easements for 328 Sixth Street and 600 Walburn Street for the Manaus Joint School District.
Sir, is there a second? There's a motion, a second, from Alderman Benner and Nichols? Is there discussion? Alderman Sevenik?
Thank you, Mayor. The reason I'm asking that we address this one other than through the consent agenda is the fact that the parking lot is completed already. It just seems as though this should have been done before that parking lot was even done.
This parking lot's been in existence for, I don't know how long. Are you talking about the, the new pavement on it?
The new pavement, yes.
Director Buck?
So I don't know if, David, if you could address?
Sure. Well, the parking lot, as the mayor had mentioned, has been in place since the mid-'80s. Prior to that, the school district and the city were one entity, so it was all one lot. The Park, Pleasant Park and the Bonta School Site were one facility. When the city and the school district split, the city sold off about an acre and a quarter to the school district and ran the property line down the center of the parking lot. So the maintenance is just something that could be done regularly. But when we, when we noticed they were doing the maintenance on the site, we wanted to correct the situation, being that it is two lots owned by two entities. The appropriate way to, to address that is to have shared access and use easements. So we drafted those together, putting the maintenance responsibilities on the school district rather than the city, but with the shared use and shared access. And so we kind of brought that through as, as almost a cleanup situation.
Okay. And I guess that's my point, is that this is a cleanup, basically, because this should have been done first. All right. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Alderman Taylor?
Director Buck, I know we talked about the Germania Hall lot that the city bought half of it and you had mentioned if we resurface that lot or anything, then it has to be brought up to the landscaping codes and that. Is there a reason why this property doesn't have to be brought up to that?
The difference is the resurfacing, which would be maintenance, milling, overlaying, where you don't get down to the gravel base, which would be essentially the foundation of the parking lot. The Germania lot, if that is reconstructed, would have to meet all codes.
So they can put layer and layer over and we don't have, they don't have to meet that criteria?
Right. The way parking lots generally work in public works, you probably correct me on this, is your base will eventually fail, and I call it, I believe, reflective cracking, where the gravel base starts to deteriorate and it doesn't matter how many layers of asphalt you put on top, it'll continue to crack and crumble away. So it is not a permanent fix on a parking lot. It's a maintenance item. But once you get down to that gravel, usually you repulverize the asphalt, mix it in with the gravel, recompact it, it's new construction. And when you have new construction, then you'd have to comply with all codes.
Did we ask the school district if they would meet our criteria, I mean, for the neighbors there, for the building, to meet our lands minimum landscaping codes?
No. No, because it was a maintenance effort. I mean, they didn't even need to pull a permit.
Should we have maybe sold that portion of the lot to the school district?
I don't know. That would have had to been a decision of the council back in the mid-'80s to do that.
I mean, as of now, we both own it, correct?
Right now, we own about 60% and the school district owns about 40. There is a lot of advantages of having a shared parking lot. I mean, the users of Pleasant Park can use the parking lot, the school district can use the parking lot. Shared facilities like that are very common. Just there was no official easement put in place at the time. It was more of a handshake agreement. And that agreement has been honored, geez, for 40 years, almost.
All right, thank you.
Alderman Sevenik?
When was the work done? Because it looks very new. I would say that had to be under a year.
Oh, yeah, it was, it was the summer.
Okay.
Seeing no further discussion? Could we have a roll call vote, please? Hold on.
Motion carried on roll call eight zero.
Item I is action items. The first item is the accounts payable and payroll for October 19th through November 2nd. Do we have a motion? Alderman Kruger?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve the accounts payable and payroll for the term of 10/1917 through November 2nd, 2017, in the amount of $1,819,365.22.
Is there a second? So motion, a second? Is there any discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call eight zero.
Item two is the beverage operators license applications for 2017 through 2019. If we could have a motion for those recommended for approval? Alderman Kruger?
I think, names individually?
No, you can just say.
All right.
Those recommended for approval as on the...
I'll make the motion to approve the beverage operators license applications for the 2017, 2019 licensing period as listed on the memo dated November 2nd, 2017.
I think, I think that I heard those recommended for approval, correct? Did I hear that?
Yeah, as listed.
You just, as listed for approval? Okay. There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Ready? Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call eight zero.
So there is one person that was recommended for denial. I do not believe she is here this evening. So if someone would like to make a motion to either approve or deny that license? Yes. Alderman Kruger?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make the motion to deny the beverage operator license application of Brenda Ketchenango.
Is there a second? There is a motion, a second? Is there any discussion? Seeing... Oh, there is discussion. Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I would just like to double check with attorney captain on this because some of these convictions are, or date back rather far. So if we could get clarification on those, that would be appreciated.
Attorney Captain?
And I guess I would ask exactly what the convictions are, if the police department agrees with this. Convicted of a felony possession of THC three times, possession of pot. It's a little unclear, I guess.
That's correct. There were three convictions, one in '07, and one in '08, one in '09, all were misdemeanor possession of THC. When you're arrested for a second or subsequent offense, it becomes a felony. Whether it's my place to point out or not, but we've had similar ones like this that city attorneys also, given the indication that, the way that state law reads, that we generally have to deny it at our level. However, the task that the council can always look at is whether this would be substantially related to the position now, being 10 years later. So I think what we've kind of collectively looked at in the past is that this body generally has not. I would point out, not that I really have an iron in the fire one way or the other, but one of the other issues that we've had in these is when people haven't been forthright in their application. And Ms. Ketchenago was forthright in her application indicating these, these violations. So there was that element of honesty that existed in this application, just to try to hold this to the same light of other ones that you've considered.
Attorney Captain?
So seeing that the convictions occurred quite a bit of time ago, there's nothing to indicate that there were any convictions between 2009 and here we are, 2017. It, there really is not a basis we should not be considering the felony. The felony conviction should not be considered because of the, it's too far in the past that it occurred and there hasn't been any other convictions since then.
Alderman Sevenik?
Thank you, Mayor. I, the individual is notified that they can be here to appeal this. And, you know, I looked at that too. I was, I was saying to myself, that seems to have been quite in the past and that, I'm actually surprised the individual isn't here. Maybe the individual had to work. I would think that out of fairness, maybe could postpone this one till the next meeting, give that individual an opportunity to maybe try to schedule something. Might be the fairest thing at this point. I would think that they should be here, but like I said, again, you know, sometimes the scheduling just doesn't work. Maybe couldn't find a sitter, whatever, something like that. So this way, next time, if she, it is a she, right? Doesn't show up, then we can deny it.
So would you like to make the motion to postpone?
Yeah, I'd like to postpone it till the next council meeting.
Is there a second? So motion, a second to postpone? Any discussion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you.
This is just on the postponement?
Yes, I guess I don't see that as being necessary at this time. The council has in the past acted on these sorts of applications without the applicant being present. And to put what could be an unnecessary burden on this applicant as well as her employer, I don't think is necessary at this time.
Alderman Grady?
I'm just curious, did this Ms. Brenda attempt or notify anybody that you couldn't be here tonight for any reason?
None that I'm aware of.
So right now, the motion on the floor is to postpone to the November 20th?
November 20th.
Number 20th common council meeting. Seeing no further discussion, are you ready to do this?
Do you want it on that motion?
Yeah, we need to have it on the postponement.
Okay.
And it's...
Do you want me to put the date in there?
That's fine. No. He was just looking at the 140 Main Street disposition.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, so it's the one above it.
Okay, so, we're ready? Okay. This is a motion to postpone to the next meeting.
I hear it's a tie. Should I?
It's a tie vote, Mayor. Did you want to cast a vote on this? It will fail.
I'll allow it to fail at this point.
Motion fails on roll call four four.
Okay, so, the motion is back on the floor to deny? Is there any discussion on the motion to deny at this point? Oops, now we're on the wrong one.
I have to go back. Okay, so now we're on to deny.
Okay, seeing no further discussion on that. Could we have a roll call vote on the denial? Well, maybe.
Okay. I want to make sure I'm in the right spot here. To deny, yes, that's where we're at.
Okay.
Let's see here. Motion carried on roll call five three.
Okay. Item three is the property disposition of one forty Main Street. To approve the request to declare the former City Hall property located at one forty Main Street as surplus property and available for disposition with the condition that the eastern property line be adjusted to align with the building edge, leaving the mural within the city right of way. Is there a... Steve?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make the motion for the property disposition of one forty Main Street, City of Manasha, and to approve the request to declare the former City Hall property located at one forty Main Street as surplus property and available for disposition with the condition that the eastern property line will be adjusted to align with the building edge, leaving the mural within the city right of way.
Did you, did you also want to include the other portions within the recommended motion? If you look on your memo? Alderman Kruger?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I will include the other recommendations within the memo, in the motion.
Well, the other items, just so that everyone knows, I'm not sure if everyone saw this, that an easement to retain the attachment of the mural to the wall to the former City Hall building be recorded on the property with the understanding that if the structure is to be removed or razed, the city has six months to remove or relocate the mural and the mural wall. And that staff works with a commercial real estate broker to draft a listing agreement with the suggested sale price of two hundred fifty thousand, which is to be brought back through the common council for approval. So, we could talk about those things separately, or we could include them within your motion, whichever you'd rather do. I don't know if there was a... For the original, but I don't know.
Yeah. Actually, Mayor, I will, I will like to hold these recommendations off and have them as separate motions.
Just as you originally had stated.
That is correct.
Alderman Benner, is that fine, the original motion, then? Okay. Okay, so, the motion... Alderman Benner seconded. So, the motion is as shown on the agenda as what you read, correct? Okay, so, discussion. Alderman Sevenak.
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with this, this particular motion, you know, to, that it's, that we should list it as a surplus property and including the right-of-way issue. But I think we need further collaboration about how we want to sell that property and what its uses could be. I do not agree with that price. Do not agree with that price whatsoever. I mean, we can always negotiate after the fact. But the fact is that we're building homes out on Lake Park that are average homes that are going for two hundred fifty thousand dollars. And you're asking for two hundred fifty thousand dollars for a four, a three-story building with a full basement with new roof and all. I just can't see it. Unless we have a developer or a business coming in with, you know, twenty-five new employees and things like that, that's, then that makes me feel comfortable. You know, then I'm like, okay, maybe two hundred fifty will work. But right now, to set the price, I feel very uncomfortable about.
We should have some price if we're going to list it. That doesn't necessarily need to be the price, but we could get an appraisal if we wanted to do that. I forgot.
And I think you had somebody...
Our, our city assessor looked at it.
Yeah, and I know that you talked to me and you thought that should be the price. And then all of a sudden, that becomes the price. That's why I feel uncomfortable about it. Because to me, a minimum, a minimum should be a hundred thousand dollars a floor.
Okay.
Okay, so, and I'm not a real estate person. But, I mean, just like I said, I was looking at some of the homes out at Lake Park and some of the, even the average-looking ones were going for a quarter million dollars. So, I don't think that's a fair price unless we've got these other conditions that we could look at and making it an incentive for someone to come into downtown Manasha. Here's a, here's a building that you can use, and that would be kind of the carrot to bring someone into the downtown area.
Alderman Taylor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree with Alderman Sevenak on that price thing. Item two, you know, that mural was a gift to the community. As far as the construction of it, it was quite a fundraising project for the community. That whole area in front of the mural was to be all part of Curtis Reed Square. I know Alderman Sevenak made a motion that the street would maintain there for the parking for the downtown. And that's why that's not all continuous grass there. But seeing that, I think the company that put that up, it was around two hundred thousand dollars. The gift was to the community to install that. And for that to stand on its own, if City Hall was tore down, I don't see why we should have to put ourselves under a six-months removal here. First of all, I think...
That, that part isn't in the motion at this point.
Pardon me?
That is not in the motion at this point?
I understand that, but I'm just talking, talking about this, this whole document here. And I just wanted to say that, you know, be careful that people donate hundreds of thousands of dollars as a gift. And then, I think it's a historical piece and it, it's a representation of what happened here from the Native Americans to two thousand. And I think it's an important piece for the community. And I think there should be every single effort to build that in if there is a new development or a new owner, to saving that property. And Director Buck, could someone buy the City Hall and make it into a rooming house? Or is the, is there ordinances to prevent that?
I don't have the quote in front of me, but I believe a rooming house or a boarding house would probably require a special use permit.
Okay. Because for that price, I could see someone framing that office and making some sort of a rooming house out of that building, so, thank you.
Alderman Collier?
I understand the concern for the building. But if I was a developer coming to Manasha, I'd probably like that lot. But I don't want to buy the building for a lot of money because I'm tearing it down, probably. And probably trying to think about the next building and build something bigger. So, I'm hoping that we can sell it for two fifty, if we can get more. But I don't think it'll be a long-term project. I think that would end up being a new tower down the road. Thank you.
Okay, so, the motion that's on the floor right now, did you want to speak, Alex, too?
Sure. Thank you. So, we're voting on the original motion that was the property, let's see. Keep it in the right-of-way. Can you explain to me more about the, the way of keeping this mural in the right-of-way? Is this, what are we holding this future buyer to as far as maintenance and as far as what could possibly happen with this mural? Are we taking on everything, or...?
Sure, I can give you a quick explanation. So, the City Hall sits on its, on its own property, former City Hall. And then, actually, the property directly to the east, which has a portion of the mural wall on it, a portion of Chute Street and a portion of Curtis Reed, is actually a separate parcel. It's not right-of-way. When the right-of-way was reconfigured, I'm not sure what the date was for the McClone development, the parcels were just kind of left in place. And the right-of-way wasn't dedicated or just kind of left in place. So, right now, that property line that goes in between the City Hall and the property that has the mural in Chute Street, part of Curtis Reed on it, that property line bisects the mural wall. So, the mural is actually attached to about ten panels. Those panels are attached to a brick wall that sits about eight inches off of the City Hall wall. And then, they're connected together at the roof line. So, by shifting that property line to be the wall of the City Hall, that would put the mural and the wall that it sits on on a separate parcel. Right now, it's partially on the City Hall parcel. So, any buyer who were to purchase the City Hall building would essentially be, if they bought the property right now, would be purchasing a portion of the mural wall and the mural itself. And so, just to clean that up, keep the mural and the mural wall under our control, that's that recommendation to shift that lot line. And then, also to make Chute Street and that former parcel right-of-way to match up with the rest of the, the right-of-way where Curtis Reed is.
And as far as we know, without, I guess, further investigation, it can't stand alone on itself, that mural?
We talked to the original engineer on the project. It can stand on its own as long as there's a building behind it to block the wind load. If the building were to be removed, it essentially acts as a giant sail. And the supports aren't structurally sound enough to, I mean, they're sound, they're, as they were designed, but they're not designed to take that wind load. The wind would probably push it over.
Do you think we're kind of like putting with strings on a future development or something with this by keeping this easement and something that's dependent on what's behind it?
Well, the thought to keep the easement, allowing the wall to be attached, if a developer were to come in, I mean, we've only had a few, one a few months ago that walked through the building and one just recently, this past month, that's gone through the building and requested plans. If they plan to reuse the building and not open up that side, the mural could remain there with the easement. And it essentially functioned just as it is right now, although it would be in the right-of-way rather than on the, that property. However, if the developer, as he's kind of alluded to, wanted to open up windows on that side facing Main Street and Curtis Reed, the mural would have to potentially be relocated. Whether that shifted in the, in the same right-of-way area, just so they would have some access or removed altogether. So, the thought was, at that time, they could either petition the City Council directly and request it to be, to be, the easement to be removed. Or if they were coming in to remove the building itself, once they purchased the property and then the mural could not stand on its own, that was where the recommendation to allow a six months to relocate it or remove it or, or do something else.
So, basically, with this kind of motion, we're just trying to keep a little bit of control over it, but they're, either, whatever happens, they're going to be coming back to the council to, for future...
Potentially, unless they were to purchase the property and say it's fine just to stay there and we, we like it there, and then that easement could just remain.
Would we make them maintain the mural, then? Say something breaks on it or a panel goes broken or...
No.
So, it's still ours?
It's still ours, and it would be in the right-of-way, so we would still control it and maintain it. But we'd also keep the control that they couldn't alter it or remove it on their own, either.
Yeah, it's, it's a tricky subject, to say, to say the least.
Alderman Zelensky, the way this is, the motion is right now, basically, we're separating them. The city's going to own the mural, someone else could own the building. And that's all that we're saying with this motion.
But it's hard to say that motion when we're dependent on that building to keep this mural up.
It would be just like any other party wall building in the downtown, that you have a building alongside of you that is...
Of course.
Required in order to keep your building up, so...
And, are you, so, have we made a definitive approach that we want to come with this? I'm sure people have experienced this mural, just like Taylor, as he's experienced the history and everything else. Are we in favor of, I've seen minutes in here that we can dismantle it and try to save it. Is that where we're aiming towards, or we just have no idea at this point?
We, we don't really have an idea at this point. This offers us some flexibility. If the person wants to reuse the building as is, the mural likely could stay. If they wanted, as Alderman Collier said, wanted to take the building down and build something new, then that mural would probably have to go. But what we didn't want to do is, twenty years from now, someone wants to punch a hole in the side of that building, and then we'd be required to scramble to move that mural. So, this really only obligates the city if the whole building comes down. And it's pretty likely that there'd be some sort of development agreement and TIF, and all that other good stuff.
Yeah, of course.
If there's a new tower there. So, we'd be probably pretty in control of that building being demolished or something else.
More of saving us than anything.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Alderman, whoops?
You answered his question.
Okay. So, so, right now, what we have on is basically splitting into two parcels. We'd keep the mural and we'd put the City Hall parcel up for disposition. Any further discussion? I heard it beep. Where did it beep to? Oh, there it is. Alderman Taylor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Are we locked into that half a year to move it? I mean, that would be...
That's not part of this motion at all.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, seeing no further discussion? Could we have a roll call, please?
Motion carried on roll call eight zero.
I believe it would still be germane if someone wanted to make one of those other motions that was within the memo. You could still do so at this time. If not, we'll move on to the next item. Alderman Taylor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll make a motion to approve our twenty-one seventeen resolution, resolution authorizing the Director of Public Works to sign and submit the annual report of recycling and waste activities and actual costs to the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources, introduced by myself, recommended by the Board of Public Works.
I'll say. What is your point of order, Alderman Nichols? What is your point of order?
I believe, under your direction, we were still discussing item number three under action items.
And we were. If someone wanted to make that motion for one of those other items, we could still do that. Unfortunately, Alderman Taylor moved on. We can...
You said we'll move on if there's no further...
Yeah, and I didn't really see anyone to do that, so... I assumed that he wanted to go there. I just wanted to get some clarification as what my options were. And I did believe her point of order was valid, and that's what I was asking the attorney. And if anyone did want to make any additional motions regarding item I three, we could do so at this time, and then we'll move forward. Was there anyone else who wanted to make any other motions? Alderman Nichols?
For the purposes of discussion, so we can continue on with the topic, I move that we approve an easement.
Point of order.
What is your point of order, Alderman Sevenak?
There's a motion on the floor, Mayor. Let's vote on that motion. You want to do what you want to do, go back to it. That's the proper way of doing this.
I can't, I can't.
And I can never hear out my motion. You can always go back to that item. Yeah, I did. You can just go back to it. Let's just vote on this and then go back to it.
There's no objections, we will move forward with the disposition of the motion for resolution twenty-one and then go back to item three. Is there any objections?
Could you repeat that, please?
We'll, we'll take up action on resolution twenty-one, and then we'll go back to the property disposition. If there's no objection. If there's no objection. Okay, seeing no objection. There was a motion and a second for item 21. Do you have all of our...
Resolution.
Resolution 21, sorry. Yeah, we don't have 21 items. Did you get all the points of order down?
You recognized Sevanek's point of order, taking up the order.
Okay. Just want to make sure we have them all down before we keep moving forward. Okay, so, right now, we are on item K1, the resolution authorizing the Director of Public Works to sign and submit the annual report of recycling and waste activities. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on, roll call eight zero.
And Alderman Nichols, wanted to continue discussion on item three, property disposition?
Thank you. I think it would be of interest to us to at least go through these recommendations. So, I'll move that for the easement to retain the attachment of the mural wall to the former City Hall building be recorded on the property with the understanding that if the structure is to be removed or raised, that the city has six months to remove and relocate the mural and mural wall.
Is there a second? There's a motion, a second, is there discussion? Did you have discussion, Alderman Nichols?
I did. Director Buck, could you tell us what the purpose of this easement would be?
Well, the purpose of the easement would be to require that the mural and the mural wall remain in place as it is, without any ability of the potential property owner to influence by altering the former City Hall, or requesting the attachment to be removed.
So, in other words, it allows us some flexibility in the matter...
Right.
If it were to occur?
Right now, the mural wall is attached to the City Hall by the roof. They're attached together. So, if you were to purchase the property just outright, without a development agreement and the things the mayor had mentioned, you could immediately request that those two be disconnected, because you would have the mural wall, which is on the city right-of-way, attached to somebody's private property at that point. So, they could request it to be detached, or they could detach it themselves.
Or, could they allow it to still be there?
They could.
Okay, so, in essence, then, does provide some flexibility. It provides options for a private, a possible private owner. They could ask for it to be removed, or we could, or they could keep it?
Right. What the easement would do is lock any owner into requiring it to be allowed to be attached together. Does that make sense? If they purchased the property with the easement on it, they could not just remove it themselves, because the easement would be in place. They would have to come and request that easement be removed. If the easement was not in place, they could just disconnect it themselves, because it is a separate structure that is connected to the structure that they purchased.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Is Kevin next? I think Kevin was next. Okay.
Go ahead.
All I just wanted to add is that, I mean, we can do this. I don't have necessarily an issue with that, but I still just think that that could be condition of the selling of the real estate. So, I don't know why we want to tie ourselves now. It could be just something that's done when we sell it. So, if you want to do it now, you know, I don't know why, but I don't have a problem with it, but it just seems appropriate to do that when we sell it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I can answer the why just a little bit. At the Plan Commission level, all of our discussion was based on focusing on protecting the integrity of this mural, so that it still became the city's, and we had our options to do so. If this wasn't on the table going into the negotiation of the building, then that could put this on the table for negotiation, and the life of this mural could be in jeopardy. And the whole rationale for this, say that we have the option to do things with the mural. It's not the end-all, to-be-all, that that mural stay where it is, but we had to change the property line, so we had ownership of the mural, and we also needed to put this in so that we had the option to do something with that mural. And it really wasn't an item for discussion, other than the fact, it's our mural, and if we can keep it with the building, that's awesome. If we can't, it's still ours, and we're going to find a new home for it, and there's really no negotiation for it. And I really want to thank Alderman Nichols for a point of order, because it kind of got away from me a little bit fast. I did want to talk about it, especially from the Plan Commission perspective of what our dialogue was. Now, it's really the spirit and the intent of what this was, just so that it's abundantly clear it's ours, and we have control of that mural at some, at some level. So, I will be voting for item number two. Thank you.
And thank you for that explanation. I feel it's really important for us to be upfront about that with any potential buyers.
Alderman Zelinski.
Thank you. I will be voting in favor of this, but very hesitantly. I think we gave up on this mural when we decided to move from our old City Hall. The money just doesn't stop with this thing, it just seems like, now, we're going to stick all this money into maintaining this mural, when I always thought, I bet you always thought when we put this mural on this wall and had all this work done, that we'd be staying there for a lot longer than we did. But I'm guessing just keeping with the flow now, and a way we can maintain this or work with this forward, but it's hard for me to vote yes on this. Thank you.
Okay, seeing no further discussion, we are...
I'm going to say something.
Oh, go ahead, Stan.
Because I don't want it to, my, what I had said earlier, be misinterpreted. Again, I'll just try to put it in a nutshell here. To me, this is almost understood, but the way Alderman Benner stated it, he wanted to make it very clear to any potential buyer that this is our intent. So, I'm okay with this, but to me, you would have probably done that regardless, when you entered into an agreement to sell the property, so I'm okay with it.
Alderman Taylor?
I just think, what a gift of that much money. You look at the west end of the One Menasha Building, and that's where they put all the, they changed the facade there, where a lot of the utilities or the maintenance stuff is inside there. And same thing could be done with this, too. The building could be developed to save this mural, and I think it's one of those things. It's a reflection on the city square, as you drive down the street, the 2000 Committee that put all this together with the reconstruction of the city square, and the hundreds of thousands dollars that went into that. And then this mural, I think, the opportunity for our city square to keep this piece of reflection of our history of the area is very important, and I don't think there should be any compromise on that. Buildings can be constructed around buildings, and I don't think the street's going to go away unless somebody was going to buy the street up and fill right up to the square. Well, then, it would be a different situation, but I don't think it should be, should be
Seeing no further discussion, if we could have a roll call, please?
Motion carried on, roll call seven one.
Okay, Alderman Nichols?
Thank you. I also move that we authorize staff to work with a commercial real estate broker to draft a listing agreement with a suggested sale price of $250,000, which is to be brought back through common counsel for approval.
There's a motion, a second? Whoops. Alderman Nichols?
Thank you. There were some comments before about the price, and Director Buck, your memo indicates that associated appraisal was consulted about a possible value on the building, and so, could you tell us what they consider when determining a value?
Sure. What they, obviously, they consider the building itself, but they also consider comparable sales within the downtown area for similar buildings, similar age, similar use. They do not take into account age of mechanicals or interior maintenance issues. So, their estimate was about $250,000 to $300,000 would be a comparable price. We did also check with Newmark Grub Fefferly to ask what they would suggest as a sale price. They had suggested about $250,000 for the building itself. They did quote about $200, or $2,500 for an appraisal, to get a independent body to, to give us a full appraisal. An appraiser is going to look at everything. It's going to look at the condition of the building, the location, the accessory, you know, how much parking it has, mechanicals and everything, but there is a small cost associated with that.
Thank you for that. And of course, that's a suggested listing price, and every transaction starts with a listing price and is always negotiable, so I'm comfortable taking the advice of our appraiser and our real estate agent, and providing that as a starting point. I have had a lot of questions from community members as to what's going to happen with the old City Hall, so I think it's important that we move forward and take these steps.
Alderman Sevanek?
I agree with the steps. I don't agree with the price. If we were to build a similar building, or even purchase a similar building in the downtown, it'd be way much more money than this. I don't know who we're fooling.
So, we could look at...
I think it's something that we should negotiate with. I mean, if I knew a developer was coming in, and he's going to put a four or five million dollar building in that spot, I'm willing to sell that piece of property for a dollar, okay? But I don't want us to go list it for a certain price at this point, especially a low price like this, because you're going to say 250, and they're going to come back with 225 or 200, and that's out of line. And, by the way, the suggestion was between 250 and 300,000, so I think you need to read into that also. I am not, I just think at this point, it's premature. I'm okay with us negotiating with the real estate broker, but not setting a price at this point. So, I'm going to vote no on this.
Director Buck, in order...
Our options are way wide.
In order to list it, I believe we would need a price, correct?
To list it, we would need a price. The price could be whatever price you wanted. You know, I would recommend an appraisal, would be an independent body, would give you what their thoughts are on the value. The building itself, it's a nice building, it is aged, depending on what use you're going to reuse it for. If you're going to reuse the building, it would probably require substantial renovation. You know, those are all factors that a developer's going to look at when he looks at the, when he looks at the building itself.
You know, what's interesting is that I'm a person who loves watching these HGTV programs, and they get a house that's probably worth about $25,000 around here, going for about $450,000, and we're selling a three-story building in downtown Menasha for $250,000, and it's ridiculous. On the water, overlooking a marina, in the downtown setting, near restaurants, all the things that you've been talking about and bragging about, and now you want to get to set a low price is inappropriate.
So, I guess before you end your discussion, Stan, we could go one of, we'll put you back on here. Could go one of a couple ways. We could make an amendment to change the price. We could make an amendment to ask for an appraisal, or we should stick with what we have there, but in order to get a commercial listing, we, we need to have a price of some sort. So, just to chop the price out.
And I was hoping we could do that before we brought this to the council, because you called me on this matter, and I wish we would have done that. Now, we're fighting over a dollar price here that I think is inappropriate. I just...
So, did you want to do one of those other things, or want to listen to the rest of the discussion?
I'll listen to the rest of this, because I see one, two, three, you know, four lights on, so...
Alderman Krueger?
Thank you, Mayor. I do have, I do have the same concern that Alderman Sevanek has on it, but I understand we do have to have a set price for it. If you set it at 250, no one's going to come and sit there and say, "I'm going to give you $350,000," for it always goes down, so if we do raise the listing price, just to be able to get on the market, that could still be adjusted if an appraisal comes in at a different amount. For, say, if we set it at 350,000, and the appraisal comes in and the actual says, "No, it's actually more like 300,000," we can change that, you know, the listing price at that point in time, too, correct?
Or if it doesn't sell in X number of days, we could drop it as well, if we decide.
I mean, I do have that concern. I mean, I will make a, I'd like to make an amendment to change the sale price from 250,000 to 350,000.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion, a second, and now we can only discuss the new price at this point, so I don't know if anyone wants to discuss the new price.
He said 350.
350. So, Kevin, did you want to discuss the new price?
Directly.
Okay. Alderman Benner?
Yeah, if somebody wants to scream point of order, I won't take a personal. David, how long does it take to get an appraisal done on something like this? Like, if we were to make a call tomorrow, about how long do you think it'd be before we'd have an official appraisal?
Well, obviously, it depends on the availability of the appraisers, but it shouldn't take very long, easily within two to four weeks.
So, possibly, we could have something by the next meeting?
Potentially.
The other question I have is, we have put some new mechanicals in this building, still, still on the price. Have we ever done anything with our elevator? I know we've had problems with that, we haven't. So, just a price, say, to rebuild the elevator system would be, I'm guessing, $100,000?
We had that or more in the budget. I forget what it was, but...
But it was six figures.
It was at least 100. Do you remember, Tim?
So, you know, if somebody's going to be looking at that, they're going to look at mechanicals, and they would take that into consideration as well, as to what that would cost, which would certainly be a bargaining chip for them, for bringing the price down. And, of course, you know, that building is, like David said, you know, it's set up for what we are, and a bit antiquated as far as its finish is, and they would also have to remodel and take that into consideration, and I don't know what that building would be worth after that, but there would be considerations for that. I'm not sure where the number is. I wouldn't really know what to say unless we had an appraisal to go along with it, so those are just my thoughts, and I just kept thinking of that elevator and what that would add to the cost and what it would bring down to the, to sell it, the sale of that, of that building. Thank you.
Alderman, Zelinski would be next.
I missed, I've got two Alderman asking me questions while, so I missed the point of, what was the, the one that you mentioned that we spent, no, I know about the elevator, that's been the issue forever.
We did put some money into the AC system.
The AC, and then also, we did, we redid the entire lighting in that place with Orion. Was it Orion? Yeah. And that was a big cost and a great savings for that building.
You know what's even more interesting? Now, we have people coming through before we left that wanted us to change them out to LED, because it would save us even more than what those bulbs saved us, so even those bulbs are now considered...
So, I mean, there's a lot of, a lot of money that got put into that building, and then we're talking 250, you know? Now, we're only talking about, I mean, we're talking, we put in hundreds of thousands of dollars into that building not too long, you know? So, I just... So, I just, point I'm trying to make.
Did you still want to talk, Alex? Go ahead.
I, I struggle with a price too, because I don't know very little about commercial properties. I, if you gave me a residential property, sure, I'd give you a price on it, but I think we should just wait for an appraisal. I don't know why we're trying to guess numbers right now, and this isn't our profession, even though it is going to cost us money. We knew we were going to be caught, it's going to cost us a lot of money when we decided to move out of there, so might as well just stick with our guns and do this the right way instead of, this could be the number, this could not be the number, so.
This is 400, you're saying here, let's make a...
So, I, I don't know if it could be a motion, or we have a motion on the floor, so...
I was just asking the attorney if that could supersede this one, because it really does. If you make a, a motion to amend, well, actually, you could make the motion to amend the price instead of being 350 to be the price as recommended by an appraiser, or something to that effect.
And you gave a guesstimate around 2,500 to get an appraisal, or something like that?
Yeah, it'd be approximately 2,500.
2,500.
So, did you want to make an amendment to get an appraisal to help us set the price?
Yes.
Okay, I'll take that as a germane motion. Okay, so, there's a second by Alderman Grotty. So, now we have an amendment to an amendment.
So, the 250 to 350 is no longer, just to get an appraisal?
It would be to amend...
Alderman Grotty.
It was Alderman Zalinski and...
Alderman Taylor seconded Alderman Kruger's motion to change the price from 250 to 350.
But now, we're looking for someone to get us a price, so I think that, that's fine.
That'd be easier?
Okay. Is there...
Yes.
Okay. So, both Alderman Kruger and Taylor withdrew the motion. Okay, that makes life easier. So, now, we're talking about getting an appraisal. Alderman Collier, did you want to talk about getting appraisal?
Now that we're getting an appraisal, I'd like to ask the community developer, Buck, if the appraisal would come in, let's say, $400,000, would that mean we put it up for sale for 400, because we want to get 400,000? Or is the $250,000 price that we originally asked is for maybe a bite for somebody to come in and buy it and tear it down? Or what's your opinion?
Well, no matter what the price were to come in for an appraisal, that would obviously have to come back to the city council for approval of the listing agreement. I mean, the council could put a higher price than the appraisal or a lower price as, as you wish, but at least that'll give you a nice baseline of what an outside agency is feeling that it's worth. There are maintenance costs, you had mentioned of the improvements that we had to the site. I did look in an, in an old memo from when we, when we had moved, and the estimated cost for the, for the elevator maintenance and the boiler replacement was about $285,000. So, again, you know, you had mentioned there is improvements that we had done, but there's also work that still needs to be done, so anybody to buy it would have to put that in to have it function properly. And an appraisal, appraiser will pick that up, it'll be reflected in their price.
Alderman Taylor?
I thought this is just on the motion.
This is just on should we get an appraisal or not?
Yeah.
No? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you. Where would the 2,500 come from?
I believe we, we would probably have to take it out of the community development management account, so I believe that account does not have the funds in it right now. So, we'd either go over budget, or we'd have to use some monies from 2018 budget.
Thank you.
Okay, so, there's a motion on the floor to secure an appraisal on the property at 140 Main Street. We have a roll call vote, please.
Just a moment, just to put that up there, because I have to, because it's an amendment and you've... Okay, so, that's what you...
Okay, so, there's the motion that's on the floor. Is there any further discussion on just the appraisal? Seeing none, could we, oh, sure.
I see her...
Dan did that all the time.
I see your finance director jumping at the bit a little bit. What would you say would be the best way to go about, if this does get approved tonight, to go about that 2,500?
If you remember, with our budget, our last two budget workshops, we do have excess money, we have a little bit of a surplus in the operating budget for 2017. It may not be in the community development portion of the budget, but there is surplus monies left in there of 2,500. So, we would be able to take it out of the 17 budget to be able to cover this cost so that the appraisal could get done yet before the end of this year and not have to wait till next year to do it. So, my recommendation is we could take it out of 17, we could just find, and if, and if it would be in community development or a different department, if it would overrun, we could always do a budget adjustment after year-end or something. But there is a little bit of funds left over in this year yet to cover this if you wanted to.
And what would that be from? The operating, you said?
In the 2017 operating budget, yes.
So, I guess, I don't know who to ask this question to, should I add this to amender, or just move forward as...
What's the question?
If we should add to this amendment that for appraisal, where should we get the funds from?
It would come out of the community development budget, and we would, yeah.
Keep it as, okay.
There's probably a line within your budget that...
Okay.
Yeah, that would, shouldn't be an issue. Seeing no further discussion, I think we're ready for a roll call vote then?
Yeah.
Okay. Maybe? It didn't pop up for whatever reason.
Okay. Okay.
Motion carried on roll call seven-one.
So, this would change the original motion to, that staff works with a commercial real estate broker to draft a listing agreement and contracts with a, to get an appraisal and bring the listing agreement back to the common council for approval, as well as the price.
Okay, so...
That was a really long, drawn-out way to say that, but...
So, we take out the suggested price?
Yeah, basically, take out the suggested price and put in appraisal.
Okay.
And what we'll likely do is, we will look, look at that appraisal price, and the council will insert a price then within the listing agreement at that point, based upon that appraisal.
I remember when I thought, that's what I told you, the motion should have been. Tonight, we wasted 30 minutes.
Just because you want to get home for the Packer game, Stan?
I didn't do it that.
Seeing no further discussion, if the clerk is ready, we'll take a roll call.
Motion carried on roll call eight-zero.
Now, we'll move on to Resolution 23 regarding the official depositories. Do we have a motion?
Yes, Steve.
You want to do it, Steve?
Sure.
It's a very exciting motion.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make the motion to approve Resolution R-23-17, a resolution regarding the official depositories of the City of Manasha, introduced by Mayor Merkis.
Is there a second? There's a motion and a second by Alderman Benner? Any discussion? See, Alderman Sevanik?
Was there any changes from past practice?
I know that First National Bank, which no longer exists, which maybe, now, I don't, I haven't been here long enough to really know who all switched around, but the Nicolay National Bank, I believe, replaced First National Bank. So, that was one of the changes. And then, we also had gotten, I think, there were a couple changes from the Manasha Utilities that were added, so they had forwarded information so that this is the combined listing of the depositories for both National Utilities and the City of Manasha.
Thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call eight-zero.
Item three is Resolution 24, authorizing the pledge and security agreement for the Fox City's Exhibition Center. Is there a motion? Alderman Sevanik?
I'll move for the adoption of R-24-17.
There's a motion and a second by Alderman Benner? Is there any discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call eight-zero.
Item L is appointments. The first item is the appointment of David Schirbel to the library board for the term of 11/6/2017 through 7/1/2020. Is there a motion? Alderman Sevanik?
Mayor, I'll move for your appointment.
Is there a second? Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item N is public comments on any matter listed on the agenda. Seeing no one, we'll move on to adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn? Alderman Kruger?
Yes, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
So, motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned, thank you.